Let's get it. So it's just
It's your boy D.
I'm sure you were putting in the home with smooth. Class is now in session.
That beat dough, that beat dough. What's up y'all? This is Home With Smooth, episode number one seventy. L A corruption. Ha, I was able to do a regular intro, but it was, it was mid, it was mid though, but it was way better than the goofy shit I've been on, goddamn.
Oh.
Oh, man, y'all, y'all missed out on so much, uh.
Twelve minutes of technical difficulties.
Yes, yes. I mean, I'm talking going through it. Okay, I, I have not been through it. In that way, shape, form or fashion in a long time.
Looked like someone didn't, didn't pay their internet bill, so they're using their cell phone internet that was just going in and out.
Damn, but I did. The thing is, you know what made me mad though? I'm like, dude, I've been playing card just fine. I've been, I've been downloading videos just fine. I've been uploading to YouTube just fine. I've been doing everything just fine. And the one time I'm like, oh, I'm gonna come over here, I'm gonna record, I'm putting it on Twitch, it's gonna be great.
How dare you make content? How dare you? Can't do that.
You know, you know what? You know what? The internet's for the blacks, okay? They don't like me. They don't, you know what I'm saying? They don't like me.
The internet's undefeated.
Yeah, no, no, no. And the only reason I said that is because y'all, y'all gonna see in this clip, okay, this clip, we're gonna, we're gonna play it, okay? We're gonna play the whole thing. So the concept of this video, to get serious, the concept of this video, this audio, this whole podcast, this show, is cuz L A is corrupt, okay? Corrupt in the worst ways, all right? I, I don't even know what else to say about this woman. Besides, besides for us to roll it. So I'm gonna put this up on the screen. And, uh, yeah, we can, we can just get this started.
All right, let's get this started.
Say what now?
All the, you know, folks like with us going, he did call me, he wants to have breakfast with me.
Where's taking him from?
I haven't, I just said, hey, we need to talk.
He just supported him from the
All right, don't worry, I got you. So you'll start seeing them line up.
Whatever the kid name is online. It's like the oddest theme, it's like black and brown on this float. And then there's the, there's white guy with the little black kid who's misbehaved. Este mío have no, he's, they're not even, yeah, no, they're doing, the kid bouncing off the F and wall on the float, practically tipping it over. There's nothing you can do to control him. And I'm just like, oh my god. He's raising him like a little white kid, which I was like, this kid needs a beat down. Like, let me, let me take him around the corner and then I'll bring him back. So anyways, getting back to this, this
Yeah, let's go pick them.
Yes, I see a lot of little short, dark people.
Not even like Kevin, little ones.
I was like, I don't know what minutes they came out, they got here, but
This is so bad.
I get what we have to do, right? This massage to create districts that benefit you all, right? And the future. But we gotta figure out Mark's seat too. You know, that benefits you three.
Is if, if the African American look at this, now that the liar might be suspended, I don't know what's gonna happen. I think if he should be, but anyhow, if he goes away.
You mean, you mean resign, not suspend it?
No, here
You're right, I see, yeah, there is, there is, there is If he resigns, hold on, if he resigns and the African Americans look at this as a hostile takeover because he's gone, so we all have to figure that shit out because politically they're gonna come after.
Yeah, but can I say something? Well, and this is what I call the, the, um, it's the como se llama this guy, it's the, the movie, uh, the Wizard of Oz effect. And what I mean by the Wizard of Oz effect is when you're at the side of the curtain, it's like a big voice. It sounds big, you know what I mean? It sounds like there's owls or something. And then when you actually pull the curtain, is that you see the little Wizard of Oz, but you know what?
I've never watched the movie.
It's the same thing.
It's real simple. You got a hundred people, right? Fifty-two of whom are many times, I feel pretty good about it. I feel pretty good about my chances of beating your ass.
Twenty-five are, are black. Twenty-five blacks are shouting. But they, they shout like they were two hundred fifty, when there's a hundred of us.
If somebody slides in, right, temporary or however you do it, right? That person has to support the three of you. Has to support the three of you.
Do you know who wants to run for that seat?
Reggie.
No, I don't know.
I ain't gonna support that, Reggie. Reggie was over there with Karen. After, after I went, after he was fucking swinging his ass off. The one who will support us is Heather Hutt.
Yes.
I like Heather Hutt.
Okay, all right. So, so just a little backstory and I'm gonna let you go Frankie, just a little backstory. That is, that is of a two hour and thirty minute conversation. It's two hours and thirty minutes. All, now, do they always talk like this? Possibly because each one of those recordings are always recorded. It's just nobody watches the L A council meetings and they know it. So they've been able to get away with for years, not say, saying whatever they wanted to say. Now, they got exposed by the guy that they were saying, the guy seat that they're trying to get rid of him, they got exposed by him because he's the one that has the black kid that need to be taken around the corner. But Frankie, I'm gonna let you go. Go ahead.
Damn, like honestly, I am going more about it. Um, unfortunately, it does show issues with, um, with L A, L A. Um, I, do they always talk about that in the council meetings? Probably not as much as we're led to believe, but they all know each other and they, and you could tell that, that, that they talk, they, they talk about that, um. In, in, in the beginning, because you could tell they're talking about parenting stuff and like the first part, I, like, it just shows ignorance, um, and it's like, know where you are to have conversations. Because the first part, we're talking about the kid, like the kid on the float and how like, you know, they need to spank him and they're, and you're raising him as a white kid. Um, and then you need to take him out and, and, and beat him, um, pretty much like, do I, do I have any, do I take any offense to that? No, because people have different parenting styles and sometimes, you know, physical, um, what do you call it? I can't think of it right now.
Oh, you're talking about, um, 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 physical reprimand or whatever.
Physical reprimanded and, um, you know, and I, but I wanna say like, physical reinforcement. Dope with some kids and sometimes, sometimes it, it, you know, it is needed. Um, and but everybody has a different parenting style and, you know, so do I have any, any qualms with that? No. Um, the other context of, and it's kind of like what we said about, about the Kanye thing too. Um, and that, and I'll just, I'm gonna fast forward clip notes. What he said about the Wizard of Oz effect too, he talks about the vocal minority, which I always bring about, about that. I do, I do agree with that as well. The problem is that they took it, that they made it into a racial thing. Whether it needed to be or not, that's up to them cuz I'm not in the politics game. But then, what, what they turned it into us versus them. And this one, blacks versus Hispanics. And then saying that, hey, the black people, they're gonna come out, turn against us because we, we are, we are ousting, um, African American councilman. And, and do, and they think, think it's a hostile takeover. Um, and that's just the issue. And then we're, we're going on to what, what we said with Kanye. When you go to a whole group of people, that, and that's, that's the issue. Um, I guess it like, was the, you know, like, and like I said, should they disparage people? No, is, is it the worst thing that they've said or we've heard? Not, no, not, not, not at all. Um, because, and I think that's where I'll leave it on, on there too. So my, my main thing was is that she turned it into us versus them. And kind of pretty much turned it into a race war versus blacks versus, versus, um, you know, blacks versus Latinos. Which sucks because she was like the freaking, the first Latina, um, to become council president. Um, so now that, that's a, it, it's a tarnish on, on the legacy and it's, it's, it's continuing to cycle. And the thing is, if she said, if he resigns or suspended, so obviously if we probably have to go, I probably have to go look at this whole backstory. And if she honestly feels someone needs to be suspended, uh, because of what they did or didn't do, or they need to resign because of what they did or didn't do, then it shouldn't matter about a repercussion of, and, and a, and a race war. Which means that it, it shows that you're just a genuine wish in, in, in the first place. And, and then this adds fuel, fuel to the fire because instead of just going based on, hey, this is what's best for the city. This is what's best for the people. You're, you're worried about keeping your job so you could be in power. And just, and, and then, and trying to, and trying to, trying to keep your seat. And that's, that's, honestly, that's the main freaking issue that we have. And she turned, and like I said, like I said, she turned it into a race war.
Yeah, yeah. And that, that, that mess is so freaking sick, like to me. It, it's, it's so many, it's cuz, cuz it's not just what they were saying about black people. They also said that about old people, we're just gonna, we're just gonna use them. You know what I'm saying? Convince them of this and then we're just gonna toss them to the side cuz we don't need them or whatever like that. And they're not gonna do anything. And then they talked about Koreans and how like they had issue with Koreans and K-Town or whatever.
Yeah.
And I'm just like, how, I'm like, how do you diss everybody? Everybody. And then, and the, the standout thing is nobody ever called her out for her behavior. Everybody was right along with it laughing, right along with it supporting, which lets me know that you believe that too on some level. You agree with something that he said.
It, it's what I said, you could tell by the language that they were using, even if they don't talk about this all in the meeting, in the meetings, they do have these conversations outside the meetings. They, 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 they do feel this and this is normal, this is normal conversation. Because, because you could tell, cuz that's, that's the thing, you could tell about how freely, freely they use different, um, just, and I can't even say bad language, just different terms, different languages too. And that's the thing when they said, oh, hey, come, you know, they, they're raising this black kid like a white kid too. So the fact that they're using these, these descriptive terms and everybody's okay with it. And then, um, and, and so, so, so that, that's how, that's why no one stopped her. And because they probably had conversations like this beforehand too. And, and I think that's, so that's, that's the first thing, like I said, it's know where, know where the hell you are. Um, cuz, cuz that, 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 that's the one thing, like know where the hell you are. And then the second thing is, like, why are you trying to create a race, a, a race war?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't, I, I, I for the life of me couldn't, and then I'm like, y'all know all of these are recorded. Like, and, and y'all know the, the dude that's not there is gonna watch this. You, you know, like, I, I, like, y'all really think on camera, y'all wanna talk about outing this man? Getting him out the seat, talk about this other guy, talk about his kid. And they're not gonna do anything about it? Like, and, and, and this is the part that I love L A for is that they've been consistently since this moment, applying pressure to them to get them all out. They've been at every council meeting, every time. Every time. They're never going to escape this, ever. It's gonna follow them the rest of their political career in L A.
Yeah, well, yeah, and, and that's the thing too, because, and it's funny because, and you could tell the hypocrisy that she has because, cuz you, you're trying me cuz she's, she's talking about, um, Koreatown, right? And at first, they're, they're talking about, um, and it's, it's the funny two things. Because the things that minorities, you know, and all minorities, so I'm, I'm putting this us in there of how they say how, and they, and they say like it's exclusive to white people. That's why I always say it's the people in power. They wanna redistrict everything to break it apart, um, to break it apart. So then no district gets too powerful to, to, to keep, to keep her, um, so, so they could keep their positions. So, and that's even redistricting. So that's like, hey, we, we don't have too many black people there. So then if black people get together, guess what? They're in two different districts. So stuff doesn't count. They're trying to do the same thing with, with, with the Koreans as well too. And it's funny cuz I, cuz I know her because in Van Nuys and everything, she's a big, um, she was a big advocate for, um, undocumented, um, um, Latinas. Or like Latino, you know, and homelessness too, right? And she's a big, you know, and of, of trying to do, of trying to stop, you know, kind of like some deportation stuff and everything for, for undocumented, um, just undocumented people in California. But then she's over there talking shit about Koreans, saying, I don't know how she, how they got there. Um, you know, she, and then the thing is, you know, she's saying that, like, like, uh, like, like, um, like, like, tepea, tepeos about them saying that, that they're ugly. So then again, she's despairing, she's disparaging them on the way they look. And it's like, it doesn't really matter how they got here and they're here. And if, if this, if it's your stance and you wanna help, you know, people who hear legally, it's, it's all or none. And so you could tell that, um, she was kind of just in there just to help Hispanic people.
Yeah, yeah. And I also, I also really wanna add that this lady, okay, is not a, I mean, is not a Republican, okay? Everything you thought you heard, none of these, these are not Republican. These are Democrats, okay? These are Dems, which goes back to something I said a long time ago. You can't trust either of them, okay? Just blanketly, you can't just blanket party down the line and trust them. Like, no, no, no. There's, there's several people on both sides of the aisle. I would never leave my kids around, ever. You know what I'm saying? If I, if I had kids, I don't have kids.
Well, it, it just, if we go back to the thing, it, it really, really shows is that, and, um, we can't use Republican and Democrat as, cuz pretty much unfortunately, we use those as disparaging remarks, racial slurs, freaking, um, condescending remarks too. And, and, and we can't do that because I tell a lot of, um, and even conservative and, and liberal too. Because there's no, there's, I can't say nobody cuz I don't know, there's hardly anybody who is all on one side or all on, on another side. Um, and unfortunately, Republicans get labeled as racist. So there's a lot of conservatives who are Democrats because they don't wanna be seen as racist. And, and, and vice versa too. There, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, you know, there's a lot of Republicans that they don't want to be seen as liberal and, and helping this amount too. Um, or, or they, and so they, they identify as one group and not the other who are more liberal. Just because they don't wanna be seen as, hey, I, I don't give everybody, everybody a free handout. And I think that's where, that's where you need to go down and actually vet these candidates. And I think we talked about this like in the, the very, very first episode of Home With Smooth. How do we fix this issue? It's about education. And, um, so I will say this, this is not to say, hey, don't trust any politician. It's not to say, don't trust anyone who's not outside your race. I'm not saying that at all. The, um, you have to go and learn about these people. You have to go learn about the struggles of, of other groups of people, of other races and of these politicians to find out and educate yourself. So then you make this, this is it, you make the decisions and your community makes the, the decisions that greatly benefit them. Because unfortunately, as you saw right now, even if we take out all this, all the disparaging remarks, all the talking bad about, about the Koreans and, and the black people and everything, they move us around like chess pieces to fit their own interests. And then, and that's on us as well because if we're not involved, and, and I'll put it this way too, I'm not as involved as I should be as well as in passing, you know, making sure people are informed. But if we all do our part, this won't happen, um, or this, or this won't happen as easily and it, it won't get to this point.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I think a lot of people fail to realize the power of their vote. Because like that, not that many people actually be voting in these local elections. Not that many people vote for Senate. Like you notice you, like, when, when you have the big, the big presidential election, right? You'll see presidential votes, XXX million in the state for this person. However, you go to, you go down and you go look at the Senate races, right? Cuz you can, you can vote, uh, if both seats are available, you can both vote on both candidates that, that are, you know, both seats, right? Vote, vote on both seats. They won't even have a quarter of the votes that the presidential had. So everybody filled out president and then skipped.
Yeah.
And then the straight skipped, which makes no sense.
Um, I, I think it goes to a system of what we have. And unfortunately, I will say this too, in a world where we are really, really busy. Um, and I'll say, I'll just say this for California cuz in California, pretty much you have to work. Everybody has to freaking work. People are working longer hours, we have inflation, grocery stuff, gas is expensive, groceries are more expensive, everything's going up too. So the people, the free time people want, um, they want. And now people in their free time, they're doing side hustles because they need more money. A lot of these groups, both sides, they just need to do voting for dummies. They, they, they need to go ahead and break stuff down. So, and so for me to know about this prop, I don't have to read a freaking, uh, uh, technical order. And then, and so I just know, hey, this is what it is, the process on, and even if it's, hey, this is the flip those version, this is what it does. These are the pros, these are the cons, cons for it. If you wanna know more, go, go more in depth. And I think a lot of these groups would do better with that to get people more involved.
Yeah.
But the thing is for the people up top, the system they have right now is working, it's working for them. So they don't wanna do that. And, and I think that's just like the main issue cuz people are like, oh, can you, can you wanna do this? Can you wanna do this? And it's like, if you give me like, like a little freaking, almost like a business card, give me a business card, something like this too. Prop, blah, blah, blah. This is the main purpose, purpose it's gonna do. This is how it's funded, the blah, 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 these are the pros. Um, the setbacks, you know, setbacks, um, since it's funded by this, it's an erasure tax by like, you know, two percent or this and that too. That's what this does. And vice versa, and the same one to go against. And you go say, hey, if you did fund it cuz we keep this, this, like that, if you wanna go more into it. And I think more people, they would go, okay. And if it's something that's really, really simple like that, they'll be like, oh, let me look more into it because this could affect me. And I, and that's really what it comes down to is just freaking education. Um, or if they get, and that's the thing cuz it's kind of like, dude, if they get celebrities to go in there to endorse it, have a celebrity, break it down in freaking plain English, instead of saying, I support it, like, this is why I support it cuz it's this, this and this. This could be the bad thing for it too. Go, go, go read this. And I think that's just, that's just the other thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't, when, when I think about people in, you know what I'm saying, you might have a question point, like people should read. Like I was in the line with people, I remember the last time I went to vote, I'm in the line with people. And they had, they're handing out the pamphlet so you know what to, what to vote on, right? So I'm reading this stuff and I'm like, hey, y'all, y'all, like I'm talking to the people next to me, I'm like, hey, did y'all know about whoopie doo? Did I? No, I said, that's in prop, that's in prop thirty. You know what I'm saying? Did you know about this, this? Uh, no, I'm like, that's in this proposition. And then, um, there was the whole, um, I think you, yeah, you were here for that. On our ballot, the straw thing, I was like, oh, this is dumb. The bag thing, I said, look, y'all, it's not gonna save the world. These bags aren't gonna save the world. People don't even take that many bags like that. Like, there, there are few outliers that, yes, they use them for the small kitchen. I mean, the small, uh, trash bag in their kitchen or in their room, you know, use them as a trash bag. But outside of them, small exceptions, most people are buying goods. There's no, there's no need to add more money on top of it. You know what I'm saying? Like, oh, we're gonna give you a raise, but now, but, but we're gonna tax you more. Like, no. You, you should, you should actually encourage people to spend more. Give them more than money. They're gonna blow it. They're gonna blow it. Most, they're gonna blow it. That's, this is what they do.
Yeah, there, there's like a bunch of stuff and even if talking about waste and every, and everything too, it's, they don't, like I said, they, they don't, they don't clearly explain it. And then it's like we see, it's like if they say, hey, stores can't use plastic bags here, they, they go, they, they do ways, they do ways around it too. And I, like, and like I said, there's better ways for them to do a bunch of stuff and they don't, and if nothing's really, nothing's really written in plain English. And that, that's, that's just what it, that's just what it comes down to. And it, like I said, and like I said, we, we go, we, we go up, we go up to the people over here. And they don't think about this. They're trying to, they're, they're trying to redistrict freaking stuff so they can stay in power. And then like what she said too, cuz you know how she was, so the good thing is that she stepped down. Um, yes, Ms. Martinez, Mary Martinez, um, like I said, so the good news is that she stepped down. Um, but you know, she was kind of being like, oh, you know, it's a, um, what'd she say? You know, in, in a moment of, of intense frustration.
Moment of intense frustra, look, look, uh, look, I'm tired of people. Okay, look, this is what I'm not gonna let people do. You don't get any excuse for being frustrated, for being mad, all these other things to be racist.
No, this, but the thing is, she wasn't frustrated.
Yeah, she was
She, she went in the beginning and she was laughing her ass off. They broke it up saying, hey, and like I said, part one, when they're talking about the whole parade float thing like that too, didn't bother me. You know, cuz I said, should, should you use a probably different vernacular? Yes. You know, but not the worst thing I heard, not the worst thing I will heard. Don't think she meant, meant, meant so much harm because it's funny, and I'll say this, in, in the Hispanic community, it's like that, of how they rate. And I'm saying minorities persons like that too, based, based on the resources available of how we discipline our kids. So it's like, do I agree with what she said? No, but was it bad? No. So then it just opened and opened.
So, so I wanna give two, two things, two things, two things. Uh, one, one extra fact and another, another is, another is a push, a bit of a pushback and we'll see where we land. Um, so the first, first thing is fact, okay? The guy that is, it's a white guy, he adopted a black child. I just don't want that to get lost in, right? Like, you know what I'm saying? And the, the, and this is where I push back on what you're saying. To, to start off the conversation, she's like, he's with the blacks. Like, you know what I'm saying? Like she's talking about that guy and sees like he's with the blacks. You know what I'm saying? Like, like that already let me know, cuz look, first of all, who, who refers to black people as the blacks?
Oh, the thing is
That, that sound, that's the way that she said it in, in tone, like he's with the blacks?
No, and, and that's, and that, and that's why we're, like I said, maybe it's because I'm, yeah, like I said, and I'm saying, I, I blew, I blew up. I grew up in an apartment complex full of Hispanics. I, you know, you know me, dated, dated Hispanics, everything, been, you know, speak Spanish. So maybe, I'm not sure, I'm not, that's what I'm saying, I'm not saying it's right. And as I said, and I never wanna say it, say it was right. I'm just saying it wasn't a standout thing. It's like, and that's why I said, should they have been talking about it at, at the council meeting? No, but I didn't see, like, there wasn't really malice because she was describing a freaking situation.
I, I
But, 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 but that's why I said, like, was there malice on that one? No. Should she have said it? No. Should she said it where she was at? Hell no. But I'm, that's what I'm saying, I don't think there was malice because she was, she was describing a situation. And then, and then that's what they, you know, and unfortunately, when you say stuff and that there's words in Spanish, that when you just say it straight out and like in, in an English connotation, it just sounds bad even though it's not. And that, and, and that, that, that's why I'm saying, I don't think there was malice, but she, but she, but I'm also saying
I, I don't know, I don't know. I feel like there was, there was, there was, there was ill intent. I went, I don't know if I'll go as far to say malice, but there was definitely ill intent. Because then you pre-recorded, the next thing she goes to is, let's talk about these Korean, like and, and that, so, no, but what I'm, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, with, with, with the having the context of it all, it, it just was immediately bad cuz it started off.
No, that, 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 that's what I, no, that's what I was saying because I'm, cuz, cuz I'm going to based on how I listen to it. So I'm saying the first thing they said kicking off, it's like, that's what I'm saying, was it the worst thing I've heard? No, well, I heard like that too. And I was saying, I don't think, I don't think it was malice. But then I was saying, but then as you unpack it, that's, that's what I was saying. So I'm saying in the, in the beginning, I'm like, okay, cuz in the beginning, if I'm going at it, it's like, then I've been in, in, really in the meeting, it seems like they're, they're kicking it off. And she's talking about something that, that she said outside. And that's what I'm saying, was it? So, and, and that's why I'm like, should she have said it? No. Do I think there was ill intent? No. But then going further in and then going through this, kind of like we're talking, talking about Kanye. When he say the things individually, not When he said the things individually, not that bad, but then when you keep on going on and on and on and on, then we have, then we have the issue. And that's, that's what I'm saying on this one too. The first thing she said, especially because I'm looking at audio, I don't know how the meeting was, I don't know what, 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 um. I don't know what, what was before it. So I, I don't know what preceded it. So that on its own, at the moment, I'm, I'm saying, not bad. Yeah, not bad, kinda odd, but, but, but then when you keep on going in, that, that, that's what I was saying, that saying that that, that was bad. Because, because then, because after that, because that, because on that one, she was only saying a situation. When she got further in, then she was, then she, she was throwing those disparaging terms in there. And that's what I'm saying, maybe I'm de-sensitive to that one just because I've been around the Hispanic community and there's a lot of those terms that I always freaking hear. And, and they're, they're not, and they're using them to describe a situation. But then, but then once you went in and then when I, when I listened to him, when you called the person, person an ape. And called him saying that, that the Koreans were ugly and going through that stuff, that's when I was all like, alright. And, and that, and that's when I went into the race war. And, and then when you look at all four of these people, because it was, it was the council meeting with the poor Hispanic people. Saying, hey, let's get, let's, let's get somebody in there to, to, to benefit, to, to benefit ourselves.
Yep. Which, which is just, which is just crazy to me, like, for that, they would be that underhanded. You know what I'm saying? Like, and my, and I, I, I wouldn't doubt that it always happened in politics, but my goodness, it does. Man, I, I do, I do wanna say this, like brief, brief segue, bro, like, I'm so fucking tired, bro. Like, like it, it's just wild to me, like I just real, like I just realized it, like I'm, I'm like looking like, and I'm like, yo, I. I'm like, I'm dying over here. I'm literally almost deceased. No, but seriously, on a serious note, on a serious note. That whole thing, you can listen to it. Um, it's on YouTube. If you wanna listen to the whole interview thing they had, it's about two hours and thirty minutes. And it's like, and, and he, and, uh, my friend, he, the, that, in the video we just watched. He, he clipped up the, the hot stuff, he clicked up the, clipped up the hot button stuff, which is just crazy to me because I'm sitting there like. Dude had to sit there and listen to a whole two hours. Like when you're clipping, you literally have to sit there and re-listen to the whole thing. Like, and that's a job in and of itself. And I'm like, when did you have the time? Like the clip to a two hour and some change thing and making it the format that it is. But I, I, I think, um, to, to move this conversation to somewhere else. Like, I think they all should leave.
Well.
I think all of them.
Gil, so, 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 so we know, we know Martinez left already, right? Then we have, um, Sidilio, he actually, um, his term expires in December anyway. If you leave right now, they, they, they could put his, um, they, they could put in Hernandez, um, Unisa Hernandez. Um, already has that one as well too. And then Deleon. Um, and then Kevin Deleon, he, um, he offered an apology, but he's refusing to step down. And, um, and then he say, hey, I, I want to go apologize to this. And then, uh, Ron Herrera, actually, um, he resigned from the County Federation of Labor and, you know, and the, and the executive board too. So.
Wait, wait, he resigned from who?
Um, cause he's, he's signed from the, um, the. He's signed from Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, um, on October tenth and the chair of the feder, Federation's Executive Board. So, so Ron, so pretty much, uh, Ron, so Ron Heard, um, resigned. Also, Nury Martinez resigned. Gil's of Sidilio is on his way out anyway. So, um, if he resigns now, they could, um, they could put, um, Unisa Hernandez into, um. In, 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 into, into, into the seat. But if not, um, if not, if not, we have to wait until, uh. Wait, wait until December. Um, so. So that, that's gonna be the one thing, but unfortunately.
Yeah.
This is the thing is. This makes it, because, and it's thing, because, um, these four are, or they're all Hispanic. So now it sucks that when they put someone else in there and, and then I say we got Hernandez in, in there as well, um, because she's supposed to be coming in. Um, that. It's thinking of people, pause for cause. And any, and any programs that they started that were good. Are gonna be put on the back burner. Or they're, they're, they're gonna be, they're gonna get looked more, they're gonna be looked more into it now too. Which, which really, which, which, which really sucks.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely, um. I think, I think the next thing I, I, well, I'm not, I don't, I don't know if I'm, I'm prepared for an in-depth conversation for. But I do, I do wanna do a, maybe run LA Corruption back and do a number two. And we kind of talk about some more things that are corrupt in LA, because I really, really wanna do, uh, uh, something about, um, LAPD.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I really do. I think, I think, I think that just the gangs and all that other stuff that LAP. I think, I think that would be a nice episode, like to sit down, get, get, get stuff together. Get like research and actually like do it like properly. And also do it in a fashion where I'm not like half fucking asleep. Cause that, that's the only, that's the only part that's annoying me about this. Cause I'm like, I'm like, man, I'm like, if I wasn't so tired. Um, cause I, I only had two hours of sleep last night. I failed myself. I failed myself. Um, but I do, I do, um. I do really want to like, thank you guys for, um, for watching the show, okay? For, for over, over the years, the two years, I wanna thank you guys for watching the show, okay? Um, I don't know, I don't do that that often, but I do wanna thank you guys for watching the show. Um, I'm really happy, um, to be here, um, to still be here, you know what I'm saying? O- over the, over the years, um, and over the time, and I wanna continue to be here and continue to come back. To you guys, I wanna thank Frankie for being here from the beginning of time, you know? Since the beginning of time, man, and I, and I, and I just, I, uh, I really just look forward to like, just brove and like. Being, just being happy and around, like just being more positive, man.
Positivity is key. I am, I am done with negative people, honestly. Negative people have been annoying as hell. So yes, it's stay positive, always look for the bright side of stuff. Bad things happen, but don't dwell on them. And like I said, this, this corruption scandal that's going on right now are, you know. There's, there's, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a, a good, a good ending, ending to this. Where there's, um, people are gonna get replaced, people are gonna be a closer eye on this. Hopefully people who actually believe, believe in their, um. Move, movement is, is good. I'm not sure, I, I've looked at how many, how long these people were sitting in, in certain things. Um, but, uh, but you know, but if people are just stuck in the council forever, because they wanna absorb power. Then they stop doing things for the interest of people and they start, start doing these for the interest of, of themselves. So hopefully this shows that people, if people want a career in politics, that they keep on moving, growing and developing. Um, as well, or, or, and they don't, they don't get stagnant. And hopefully this helps people realize that people are voting. It's, hey, we need some movement, we need some change, let, let's go and do our parts as well too, to make sure that nothing bad's happening.
Yeah, yeah, most definitely, man. Um, if you guys, if you guys can think of any other like corrupt places. That you guys want us to cover, just leave a comment, you know what I'm saying? Leave, leave, leave your, leave your thoughts. On how you guys feel about this video that was just posted, um, that we just, uh, played. And how you feel about the LA City Council and all that. Leave your thoughts down below. Um, I know this is a bit late for the topic, but I do wanna thank you all for watching. Uh, I wanna, uh, just tell you guys, uh, this has been episode one seventy of the Home Rule Smooth Podcast. And, uh, we up out of here.